Good afternoon. Today is October 7th, 2024. Our 3 o'clock PM Rowan County Commission meeting. We are grateful that you're here with us this afternoon. And as we begin our meeting, like we typically do, we're going to have our chaplain come forward. This is Chaplain Taylor. Chaplain Taylor is going to provide for us what's called a solemnizing prayer, which means that's for the commissioners, not for the audience, but you're welcome to listen in. He'll come up and pray for wisdom for us as we make decisions today and always, and we'll have a pledge of allegiance. So chaplain, come on forward. Commissioners, if you'll join me, we'll get started.
Commissioners. Lord, we come to you today. We come to you today in behalf of our county commissioners, dear Lord. We thank for them, Lord, in preparation they made for this meeting, dear Lord. We come today in behalf of our county commissioner, Mike Keskey, dear Lord. Ask you to be with him, protect him, dear Lord, and bring him back to us safely. Be with his family, be with them, and help them, encourage their hearts too. Pray this meeting today, you be with the other county commissioners today, be with them today. Have them make the right decision. Thank for the opportunity we have today to pray in their behalf today. Please honor our prayer request today in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Chaplain Taylor. I've got a few items that were given to me. And I think we're going to put them on regular agenda instead of consent so that county manager can explain what they are. But these three additions, we'll add that as item AA. Well, A, little A, or A1, whatever you want.
Is it going on the regular agenda?
Yeah. So, yeah, they'll go together.
And you're going to do it on the regular or consent? I thought you said consent.
Oh, no telling what.
All right, those will go on as item A1 or AA, whatever we want to do, okay? Is that okay? All right, any other additions or deletions? All right, motion approved, the agenda is amended.
So I'm going to say.
All in favor, say aye. Then we do have consent agenda. Items A through W, motion approved consent agenda. In a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, and then we will move to the other one for public comment. All right, first Bobby Kemp. Three minutes. Three minutes. We got to watch too. Three minutes.
Thank you all for letting me come back to speak again this afternoon. I appreciate the opportunity. I wanted to say, and I promise, Commissioner, I won't be short, but there's some things in this county that I've had part of before with the business that I work with, with a company here in Salisbury. And we were in manufactured homes, sales. And I've worked closely with the planning department, zoning department, building inspectors, and things of that nature. I know a little bit about that kind of thing. And I've even been right here in this room before on meetings with bankers and farmers and different people throughout the community. I can't remember who all was here, but we had a good number of people here planning and talking about zoning. But I'm not here to talk about zoning. I'm still here about the seniors, the disabled, and the veterans. And I wanted to say also, this past week, I was up in Lansing, North Carolina, where a lot of people lost their homes, and it's just terrible. And we had took a load of supplies up there to a fellowship hall at a church who was distributing them and cooking and feeding the people. And as they was unloading this trailer we had, a big boxed-in trailer, the pastor had came up and spoke to me there at that church. And there was a couple of men standing off to the side. It was from his church. And when he nudged me and nodded for me to look, those men were crying. They going through a real, real hardship up there. Now, let me go back to why I'm here this afternoon. And standing here looking at Old Glory, I can't help but think about our veterans and what they've done for our country. If it wasn't for our veterans, we may not be flying that flag tonight. It's untelling what could be there, even if we would be here. But how they went and they fought for us. Our seniors here in the county, they've worked here. They've shopped here at the stores, the car dealerships, furniture stores, grocery stores. They've supported the county in buying and doing. And we've got some disabled people here in this county. And it's not my choice. Nobody wants to be disabled. Nobody does. But sometimes things happen in life. And when things happen, our veterans and our seniors and our disabled, not the condition that they folks have got in the mountain, but they need help right here in Rowan County. Even today, I've been out again and talking with people. And numerous people just today have told me about the hardship they're under because of the tax burden. I plan to go forward and try to do something to help the people. That's my plan. And I'm not here making no campaign speech or anything like that. I'm saying the same thing I said back on February the 5th, the first time ever came before you. And I just want to come back again and just emphasize again how important this issue is. And that's all I got to say this afternoon. Thank you for listening. That's less than three minutes.
You're welcome. All right, Amy Dunn.
Do I have to speak in this?
Sure, yes, uh-huh, please.
Hi, I'm very nervous. My name's Amy Dunn, and I'm a retired CPA here in Salisbury. I live on Woodleaf Road on Dunn Family Land. It's been family for hundreds of years. We own 30 acres on Woodleaf Road. My husband retired in 2021 with multiple health risks, including three previous strokes, high blood pressure, excuse me, and heart issues. We've worked well over 45 years in this community. In October of 2021, Reapers Realm haunted trail, I'll put that haunted trail that runs right along our property line near our house that sits off the road. The noise and torment we experienced for four years is no longer bearable. My husband and I have contacted Commissioner Pierce and Ed's on multiple occasions concerning the intolerable noise we have to endure every year. I was told it was up to the state. So I wrote letters to my North Carolina senators and congressmen, and they said it was in the county's jurisdiction to handle the county matters. We cannot go out of our house. We have to turn up the television at night to drown out the noise. The Rowan County Noise Ordinance states that its purpose is to preserve and promote the aesthetic quality of life in the county, ensure an environment for all citizens free from unreasonable loud noise that jeopardizes their health or welfare, and recognize the right of individuals to obtain information and derive pleasure by listening to radio and other such devices, and the right of the public to a peaceful and helpful environment. The unbearable noise from this haunted trail beside us violates all these premises, purposes. The haunted trails put our health at risk to the extreme stress levels brought by this noise from our neighbors. The regulation standards say that it shall be unlawful for any person, group, event, or business to plague, use, or otherwise operate any sound amplification equipment, admitting sound that is unreasonable, frequent, and continued at such volume on any given day of the week in a manner which may annoy or disturb the quiet, comfort, or repose of the public. This provision will be applicable when the source of the noise is plainly audible to the responding law enforcement officer at a distance of 100 feet. The Sheriff's Department has come out several times over these years to investigate. They say the noise isn't amplified and would not come down to our property to listen. This guy owns 80 acres. Some of this is not up on the road. The sheriffs never come within 100 feet of this noise, never. I've been informed by my family that my family was the only one in the county complaining about this trail. I've spoken to several neighbors. They're in fear of retribution of Mr. and Mrs. Jenkins, as are we. He threatened to cut down the trees bordering our property and put up a hog farm. He will take probably retribution for this today, but we can't live this anymore. This is a peaceful residential community, and if you or your family members had to endure this noise as we have, you would change your noise policy of amplified sound and enforce the purposes of the noise ordinance stated. I'm requesting that you modify the noise ordinance to a level not to exceed 55 decibels in a residential area between at the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. as called by the North Carolina general statutes for noise ordinance. This should be for all noise, not just amplified noise. I have the written noise ordinance for Rowan and surrounding counties for you to review. I gave each of a packet. I also have the letter I sent to Senator Carl Ford in August of 2023 requesting his help in my statement today for your review. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Scott? How are you, Scott?
I'm doing okay.
Good to see you, man.
I'm not walking too good because I've been sleeping for the last couple of days. Because this haunted trail just keeps me up. I can't sleep. I mean, I get upset stomach. I mean, you can imagine going home to your home tonight and having some loud booms and yelling going on at your house. Some band, some, I don't know what kind of band this is, but it goes along with the haunted trail. And it's just, it's so loud you can't hardly stand it. And as soon as we called up police, within 15 minutes, you know, he's driving his four-wheeler up there and seeing if the police are at my house so they can hear it. I mean, this goes on all the time. I mean, so he's monitoring the police. So I don't know what we're going to do. I mean, I can't sleep. It tears my stomach up. I mean, you could imagine going home and having all this racket going on at your house. I used to be able to go on the back porch and just sit there and relax. I can't do that anymore.
Is it just, we're not supposed to? Is it just for Halloween or is it going on throughout the year?
Well, it's going on now. It's going on weekend now. It'll start picking up more as it get closer to Halloween. It'll probably be every day of the week. And my son works at Hospital in Winston right now. He's doing internship over there. And he has sleep during the day sometimes. And it's going to affect him too. So we got to do something about this thing.
All right, Scott.
It's crazy. I appreciate your time.
Do they have to be, are they permitted for this Halloween? Don't have to be because of?
The guys with agriturism.
Well, yeah, which that's.
That land's never been farmed.
Ever.
Well, that's the challenge where the counties look to the state to define agritourism. And the state doesn't want to, and so y'all are caught in the middle.
But it says it's incident to ranching or farming.
Yeah, we get it.
There was no ranch before here.
Yeah, we've been.
This is all there is there. Who isn't a rancher before? You might be some pal.
And they disappear from time to time.
We have to come back.
All right. All right, we'll move to the first item. Ed.
Michael, my son Michael.
He only gave you one.
He's on the second page.
I'm sorry, we only had the first page. Michael, come on. Did Michael, was Michael playing football?
No, Michael's about to finish a medal.
Well, Scott and I coached Little League football together. Was he playing then?
Yeah, I played football at some point in Little League.
Well, I'm looking at your face.
A little bit bigger now than I probably was back then.
No, you're about the same size. Why, my son didn't want to do, play running back.
All right, you ready?
Yes.
Okay, so, good afternoon. My name's Michael Dunn. I'm the son of Scott and Amy. I'm here to speak today on their behalf as part of my family. I was born in Rowan County. I grew up on our land over on Woodleaf Road. Went to Woodleaf Elementary, same high school, or the same elementary school as my grandmother actually graduated from high school at. I graduated from West Rowan. That's the same high school my mother went to. My family's done a lot to contribute to this community over multiple generations. Both my grandfathers were actual farmers in the region, producing food for Rowan County and beyond the state level and national level and beyond that. My dad was a plumbing contractor. He worked in this county for over 35 years, helping build new communities as the county expanded. My mother was an accountant. She worked over 35 years in this county, helping businesses and individuals alike achieve their financial goals. As one of her four children, I can say that my family instilled a really strong work ethic in all of their children. I, after graduating from West Rowan, went to NC State and ended up getting a bio-molecular chemical engineering degree. I worked in pharmaceuticals for about four or five years. Decided that I wanted some way to come back to this county. So I went, decided to go over to med school. I've been at UNC med school for about four years now, about to graduate. I've been here in the county for about the past three months now. I'm intermittently in and out depending on rotations I have around the state. Right now, I'm over at Wake Forest. I look forward to coming back to Rowan County eventually. I live next to my parents, raise a family, and help improve the health of our community. This was until someone bought the land next to us back in 2021, named Reapers Realm. Haunted trail that recently was closed in China Grove, looking for a new place to start up. Hiding behind the agritourism wall, I watched Mr. Jenkins, the owner, build his haunted trail out of recycled pallets and near rotten lumber harvested from old buildings in the area. He knows he has no liability if people are hurt now, so why make any steps to make a safe and haunted trail at all? Now, we knew this trail would never be a place we set foot on, but we didn't know how disturbing it would be. Live bands, chainsaws, sirens, blowhorns. My parents have been tormented in their own home for years. When they finally had enough last year and started putting up signs for our desk, Mr. Jenkins threatened to tear down all of his trees next to us, our only sound deterrent from him, and build a hog farm. My father has had several strokes and open heart surgery in the past few years. Both for my father and my mother, who help us with him with so much, sleep and stress reduction is important. Not only just their physical, but their intellectual and emotional health as well. Reapers Realm has put their health at risk for multiple years with their constant bombardment during the fall and continued threats. I'm here to reiterate what my mother has already asked. Consideration for the update of our county noise ordinance. She has laid out the details, I won't rehash them. I will say though, that we are not asking for you to close Reapers Realm. We're simply asking for a common sense noise ordinance, like many of the other counties in the area, that simply keeps our community enjoyable for everyone. As a future physician and hopefully future leader in this community, I hope you consider this. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Good to see you, man. First item.
Well, good afternoon. This particular item that is on the agenda is for one more update to the motorsports complex text that the board adopted in 2024. That created a legislative option for motorsports racing complexes that include racetracks, go-kart tracks, and drag strips in the CBI and industrial district. And as we were looking at a preliminary application from the applicant, we noticed that their conceptual site plan had both a paved and a race, or a dirt drag strip. And so our opinion at that time was the way the text was written and adopted, that only one of those would count toward the, or excuse me, both of those would count toward the minimum acreage size in determining that. And so they had somewhat of a slight problem. And so they submitted a text amendment to where, in their words, that it would clarify that two racing activity tracks of the same type within the same complex do not require additional acreage to establish the minimum lot size. So basically, what they're requesting is that you can have two of the same Tier One tracks and only one of them count toward the acreage size. And so we have text here that reflects that. Just sort of as a side item, if you've looked at the NOVUS Agenda PAC, excuse me, Civic Clerk, you'll notice that we've had a little enforcement back and forth going on with the applicant. They were a bit eager in creating their dirt drag strip. And so we sent them a notice first of September as a courtesy to say, hey, by the way, this text hasn't been adopted yet. You haven't been through the conditional district process, which requires planning board, recommendation, consideration, and then to this board for approval. And so we went out before the tropical storm event at the end of the month and noticed there hadn't been any activity. And low and behold, when we came in the office on that Monday following, we saw that their Facebook postings seemed to indicate otherwise. They held the event on that Saturday, and we sent them the first citation for holding the event and likewise grading the area to the extent that they can use it as a dirt drag strip. But nonetheless, we have a hearing that's before the board today. And the text before you is the bold and underlined portions. They're very brief. On page one, you'll see line 35. We've included that calculating the minimum lot size is based on at least two of the racing activity track types. And then when we get into the meat of the matter, the clarification is that notwithstanding two racing activity tracks of the same type within the same complex do not require additional acreage to establish the minimum lot size. But if you add a third and subsequent track of the same type in the same complex, they'll require that each contribute 50% of the minimum acreage towards the lot size. So what that's saying is you get your first one, or that first one and then the second one at the minimum acreage there. But if you add a third and fourth, then you've got to contribute toward it. And that's sort of the way we were thinking that it worked anyway. The remainder of the text stays generally, well, stays exactly as the same the board adopted it in 2024. And we did, the planning board did hold a courtesy hearing and provided a favorable recommendation at the time for the text. So if you've got any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them. So this is a legislative hearing. You open the hearing, close the hearing.
All right, would the applicant like to speak?
Good afternoon. I'm Cindy Reed with the Urban Law Group in Cornelius. I've been before you before, and this is Eric Yost. He's one of the track owners and also lives near the track. And he's going to help me with this presentation. We come before you a little bit with our tail between our legs, and I want to explain that. But first, I want to explain about the reason for the text amendment. Can you hear me okay? A little louder. Whoa, that was too loud. Is this better? So when we were meeting with the planning board, with the subcommittee and the planning board, we talked about the asphalt track and the dirt track. And the dirt track, we've always talked about it because we considered it to be the same track as the asphalt track. It's just two different surfaces, and you can never run on them at the same time. You can't run on the dirt track at the same time as you run on the asphalt track because it's too dangerous and it's not allowed by racing rules. So we considered them all one track. But then when we had the noise study done, which is a requirement of rezoning, the noise study treated the dirt track as a separate track. And in fact, it is a separate track. We were just looking at it as the same because they were different surfaces, but it's the same type of racing. So we're asking for this text amendment to clarify that we can also have the dirt track along with the asphalt track as a condition of our rezoning. We can say that we can't run them at the same time. It's just choosing different surfaces. So that's what we're asking for in the text amendment. But I did want to address, and the planning board did recognize that we talked about that dirt track during our sessions with them. And they compared it, one of the planning board members compared it to Carol wins. I mean, do you really care if there's one roller coaster or two roller coasters so long as you're in compliance with the rules? So long as you're in compliance with the noise ordinance? So long as you're in compliance with the parking requirements and the traffic impact analysis? So long as you're in compliance with all those, does it matter if you have a dirt track and an asphalt track? And I would like to also say that the dirt track is crucial to the operation of this racetrack. The racetrack will not be successful without the dirt track because all the other racing tracks that are similar to this have a dirt track. So for it to be competitive, it needs to have the dirt track. And our rezoning has been submitted electronically, but Mr. Muir said it couldn't be accepted, of course, until this text amendment is approved. And I just wanted to show you something. This is our 100-page traffic impact study and our 100-page noise study. So we're taking this very, very seriously. And I wanted to talk also about the notice of violation. When I called Tim Broome, which is one of the owners of the track, to talk to him about planning board and to talk to him about the dirt track, I explained that we still have to go through a rezoning. And he said, Cindy, we have a problem. We've scheduled something on that dirt track. So I immediately called Ed Muir. That's how he learned about it, was through us. That's my recollection. Immediately, we're not trying to hide anything. And I explained to him that at this point, it could not be stopped because people were coming from as far as Texas. That is our mistake. It will not happen again because we certainly don't want to do anything to jeopardize the rezoning. And the rezoning is an opportunity to put more rules around this whole complex than exists today. But I'd also like for you to hear from Eric, who can explain a little more to you about the race. It was our mistake.
Hello, nice to meet you. Eric Yost, 284 Juniper Road, Mooresville. I grew up in Rowan County, born Salisbury High School, Boston Elementary, China Grove Middle, graduated South Rowan. I'm one of the owners and general manager at Mooresville Dragway now. And I live literally a couple hundred yards from the entrance. So we ran the impression last meeting that we had clearance, and that was our mistake that we didn't. And we reached out to Ed that as soon as we found out that we weren't, and apologetic, trying to figure a good way out. At that time, we had the sled company already in order. We had James River on board for donating tractors. Caterpillar of Salisbury came on board. We had a ton of support with the community and fans to help with this project. And we apologize that we weren't over the finish line yet with it, but that's our mistake, and it won't happen again until we are. We're really looking forward to getting this going. And the drag strip has been in the headlines before. We want to make it in the headlines in a different way. We're really looking forward to this expansion and do more than just the drag racing. We have such a limited schedule through the year of working with the drag strip. Basically, 24 Saturdays and two Sundays is the only time we run. So we're trying to do it the right way and be transparent. And whatever needs to happen, we're here to do it.
I also wanted to add one more thing, that it's not possible to add 50 more acres to the site in order to have a dirt track. That would just put it out of business because there's not 50 more acres for us to add. And again, it doesn't run at the same time as the asphalt track. It's just, they're just different surfaces, not running at the same time. Thank you.
Any questions? Yeah, this was a surprise to us, so we just went through all of this.
We saw it.
Yeah. And our understanding is someone from the outside notified the county, and then the county did send a letter. And I guess it was just ignored?
I found out about it when I talked to Tim Broome, and I immediately called Ed. I'm not sure about who sent a letter to the county, but I called Ed and said, this is what's happening, and I'll see if we can stop it. But when I talked to Eric, who does the scheduling, people were already scheduled to come, already planned to come from Texas. planned to come from Texas. It was just not a point where we could pull it back. And again, all we can do is apologize. It won't happen again. We don't want to jeopardize our rezoning. That's what's so important to us, and the rezoning puts a lot of rules in place so that this track operates like it should.
Yeah, I mean, basically, we can't run any operation. The drag strip has to run solely on its own. If we do anything, the go-karts or the dirt drag, anything, safety-wise, we can't do anything. And anything running on that end of the track is quieter than one car going down the drag strip. So that's another reason we're looking forward to getting this expansion done and going in that avenue of doing other stuff.
We heard from another couple tonight over issues like this where it's difficult for the county to act in good faith, and then these events happen and, you know. Can you not hear? So you heard another couple come in here on a case we've been dealing with for years. It seems like as long as we've been commissioners, we've been dealing with some of this. We've got other race venues we're still dealing with, and certainly in your case, we felt like we had a good relationship and we had an understanding. And you know, these guys are our eyes and ears, and I don't know, it just looked like we're going to do what even after getting a letter. We can't operate that way, you know, in our businesses or we have business locations and facilities. We can't just violate law, violate zoning, and violate ordinances knowingly, even if folks are coming from wherever. So we're, I mean, personally, we're a little disappointed at this. And so now, we're not supposed to include any additional land on this, and I don't understand that. We, even on a tier two and three, we include additional land, and those are much lesser land requirements. But this is an additional 50 acres. And so help us, help convince us.
The asphalt track and the dirt track cannot run at the same time because of safety issues, and we would be willing to commit to that in our rezoning. But without the dirt track, we can't be competitive, and there's not a possibility to add another 50 acres. And it truly was a misunderstanding on behalf of Eric because he thought when we went to the planning board and they recommended that we move forward, that that was saying that we could move forward with the race. And maybe that was, maybe I made a mistake and didn't explain it correctly to Eric, but we are certainly owning up to this and saying that nothing will be scheduled before the rezoning and that if, as a condition of the rezoning, you can even say that the dirt track and the asphalt track can't be run at the same time. And certainly, we apologize. We want to follow the rules. That's what we've wanted to do all along, and I don't know. You should apologize, too.
Yes.
We do.
Yeah, I mean, we're sorry. Like I said, I thought we had the last meeting, we were passed that, good to go, and we were basically under the contract with the sled. Once we talked to Ed, and we were committed to do the event at that point. You know, we had everybody committed, and the hurricane was coming through. It was probably too wet to do it, but we tried it anyway. But you know, just trying to get stuff going. We're the oldest-running drag strip in North Carolina, and right now, we can do what we can at that, and we've just been run down for so many years, and we're just trying to get it back to one of the nicer tracks. But it's going to take a lot of work.
Listen, we are citizens. We're not any better than anybody else, and so we're not here to force stuff on folks. We are folks just like you are. But again, these things have real consequences, that we get visited year after year on these. So I get the issue of there may have been a misunderstanding a year ago when we went through this. It was not a misunderstanding when you received the letter from Ed Muir. There was a decision made that you were going to disregard the letter from the county. And so that is, that's tough to swallow. So I'm not prepared tonight to make a decision on, you say we could put in some more rules. We're not here tonight to figure out what those new rules would be. I'd like to make a motion to table this, that we meet with staff and talk with them, and if need be, staff, talk some more with you to see if there's some questions that you have about operating from this point. So that's what I'd like to do. I'd like to make a motion to table this and work with staff on some kind of boundaries of where we're going to go. So we both know where we're heading on this, so there's no more misunderstanding. Maybe it's a bad night for you to be here, too, because, anyway, I'll just, I'll leave it at that.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that, and then I have a question. Could we go back to this 50 acres?
So our understanding is there's three tiers, and each track operation has a requirement for a certain number of acres to be available for that track activity. Raceways, dragways, those type of things have a 50-acre requirement. But if you also add a second or third tier to a first-tier operation, we reduce the second and third-tier acreage requirement by 50%.
But wasn't one of the issues around this whole track parking and how parking was along 150?
No, it's a different track.
Oh, it's a different track. Okay, I was confused.
Yeah, but there's, and it is confusing. There's Mooresville Road, there's Mooresville Drag Strip.
Yeah, okay, okay. So there is plenty of parking.
That wouldn't affect?
We have, we have a TIA to submit with our rezoning. It's not, it's not time for us to submit our rezoning, but we've done all the work, and we have a almost 100-page TIA plus a noise study. So we've done our homework when we eventually come to the rezoning. I don't know if that helps.
Mr. Chairman, should we not get a copy of that so we can include it?
Please.
Before we bring this back up?
Please, yeah. Is that our copy?
Yes.
Okay. Just leave it with Ed.
So this is going to be in support of their conditional district application. I think Commissioner Kluzman is having some difficulty separating one from the other, which is a fair conundrum.
Thank you.
But the text, if it's adopted, or once it's adopted, allows them to apply for a rezoning for their site. And that way, at that time, we would evaluate parking, the traffic impacts she talks about, and the noise aspect of it as well. So I mean, I think, while you can certainly take anything under advisement, it doesn't really do anything except it just shows in the record that it was submitted. It does not necessarily, or shouldn't really affect the nature of the application as it is. I mean, it's just there, and maybe.
It's a conditional district application, and so that would be quasi-judicial. So I think we probably should just hold off on submitting anything until you get ready for that application.
Well, I disagree, Mr. Attorney, because one of the problems we're having tonight is about a noise ordinance. And if they've already done a study stating that this will not affect the citizens out there, then I'd like to see. That would help me make a better decision on whether to pass this or not.
Can we receive it?
You can do anything you want. I mean.
Do you have a PDF form?
I'm not sure that that has anything to do with the text amendment is the issue.
But it has to do with my vote.
Well, the vote is to table, right?
Yeah. But we got to bring it back up at some time, and I'd like to have all the information I can.
We agree. So can you provide, not necessarily that, but PDF form to Ed? You probably have it on PDF.
I do, so I'll just send it to him, and he can distribute it to.
Send it to Ed, and the commissioners that wish to have it can look through it, and then we can get back, okay?
Okay.
So thank you.
I would like to do that in consultation with your county attorney, because it's not a quasi-judicial hearing, it's just a conditional rezoning hearing. So I think it's, I think it's okay.
And I wasn't sure what the process would be, but if you're comfortable handing it in, we'll send it to Ed.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, Ed. Now, the next item. This is kind of a and a half. As our hearts break daily for more pictures that we see across our sisters and brothers' communities west of us, we got a lot of folks from Roan County that are specifically Roan County government. I know that Aaron has told me how he is in contact with leadership in these different communities and how they communicate and how we have been impacted and how we're trying to help. So if, this was originally just slated to go on consent agenda, but Aaron thought it might be a good idea to talk about it publicly so folks could see how the county was contributing. So Aaron, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I get to the agenda items, just to give you a brief overview of what the county employees are doing, there's, I don't want to leave any departments out, but start with the sheriff's office there in Avery County, providing law enforcement support and other rescue support. Emergency Services has had someone in Polk County providing support and public information support since near the beginning of the end of the hurricane. We have an employee in Ash County providing 911 support. We have social service employees that are working at a shelter in Henderson County for displaced and folks that have lost their home. IT is providing support. Randy Kress spent 16 hours this weekend and one day working in Catawba County with all the IT requests. Alan and TJ have worked, they probably don't know how many hours they've worked, but they've worked every day all throughout the night. This weekend, they were working, texting constantly about what's going on. They've been supporting the shelter in Salisbury that opened. We have potential deployments this coming week and the following weeks of sending animal service to Henderson County to provide pet support and animal control enforcement. Emergency Services to provide additional support at the state EOC. The social services will be providing support at the Salisbury shelter that was set up by the state. But it's been supported by the health department, and environmental management has provided 40-yard dumpster, trash cans, forklifts. Emergency Services has provided radios to the shelter. Facilities, Dons, folks have provided trash bags. Health departments provided storage for the medication at the shelter in Rowan.
Aaron, Public Health will also be sending two nurses in the coming weeks to the affected counties.
Yeah, they're planning to go to Asheville in the coming weeks, the health department. Again, if I'm leaving a department out, I'm sorry because there's so much going on and so many folks doing so much. And how it works, real briefly, is there's an application, if you will, a software program at the state called Web EOC, and county's put in a request, and then we get those requests at the state level, and then we send what we can. We're also planning, the building inspections department, they've been rostered to go if needed to help once the building starts being repaired and stuff like that. But they've just done a tremendous amount of work. And I think I said, the sheriff's office has been up there since, I believe, the very day after sheriff. And I just can't thank and praise all the directors and the sheriff enough. I mean, they've been selfless and volunteered to go. I mean, they're getting paid, but they're volunteering from their regular duty to go do this work. And again, I just can't say enough about how hard they're working and also how much of help they're providing to the folks up there. Emergency Services and the sheriff also did a food drive where they collected things from the citizens on Thursday, and that was delivered up there, I'm assuming Thursday night. So, and they just continue to do and do, and again, I can't praise and thank them enough. But to get to the two items, well, there's three items on the agenda. These two items can be combined into one. The memo from Kelly and Jason Owens about pay and what the request would be is that, well, I'll keep them separate because there's a rank in the sheriff's office. But for the sheriff's office, the first motion would be to authorize approval of extra duty pay for all Rowan County sheriff, law enforcement of the rank of captain or below at a rate of time and a half, at time and one-half of their regularly hourly rate for each hour worked over the normal working schedule, providing mutual aid for hurricane-pelling recovery outside of the normal office hours irrespective of time taken off during the normal week and retroactive to September 28th. And basically, what that means is if they had a vacation scheduled next week, or they get back from working 12 hours a day, five days a week up there, and they get back and they have a flu and they have to take two sick days, that would not eat into their overtime. So they would still get paid the overtime they anticipated. So that would be the first motion. You could call that motion one. The second motion would be to approval of extra duty pay for all Rowan County non-law enforcement, non-exempt employees at a rate of time and one-half of their regular hourly rate for each hour worked under a mutual aid agreement, assistant or through the Web EOC outside of normal hours irrespective of time taken off during their normal work schedule. And again, that's only for non-exempt employees, so Randy wouldn't get, Randy's not going to get paid anything for this weekend other than good job. But, so that would be item two. And then item three is not related to the hurricane, but it's for the sheriff employees that worked at the Autumn Jubilee this weekend, is asking that they authorize the manager to pay $35 per hour outside of the work they've done for the county. And then there's a list of employees, one through 14. And I don't have the authority to set that pay rate. The board has to do that, but that's the pay rate they're asking that the board approve. That's what the memo says. Is that right, Jason?
That's what it said.
Okay.
I'd like to get paid for about all of them.
$45 an hour is what Jason's requesting.
Aaron, I am all for what we're doing, and I don't want to be negative about anything, but I do want to just ask about supervision. but I do want to just ask about supervision. Do our people, are they supervised by Ash County, or, or does our sheriff have control of that?
So, you know, the sheriff's office is a little different, but all the other employees, which he has a mission number two, when you apply through, when, when the other county applies through EOC, they get a mission and a mission number. And then they're, they're supervised by the folks they're working for up there. But in the sheriff's case, the sheriff has been up there with his employees, supervising his employees, as I understand it. But the other ones have been, you know, when they go up there, they do what they're told by whichever county they're at at the time. And I'm sure the sheriff does what he's told to.
Let's be clear, clarify that. Our mutual aid is a little different. When we actually go up there, we sign a formal mutual aid agreement. We become Avery County deputies, and we work under the authority of their sheriff. We are just as sworn when we're in Avery County right now as we would be here. Myself and Jason have been up quite a bit. You're proving for captain and under, but we've had very few, we've really only had one captain up there. We try to have one supervisor, at least one of our supervisors at a time with our people. We've had up to 20 at a time, but we have phased back. Our patrol function came home yesterday, and the rest of our guys up there are, the sheriff asked it to create a four-man reaction team, and what they've been responding to is looters, certain situations where they have to go saturate an area, but those will be coming home maybe tomorrow or Wednesday. Orange County, Lee County, and some other counties are relieving us, so our duties this week, about around Wednesday, will be, or what we're doing will be over, in case they call for something specific. So even though the memo says captain and below, we've had very few captains, actually, that will be pulling any overtime from that. David Earnhardt is really the only captain that I think, he has been the one that, when I'm not there and Jason's not there, that can, that is in command of our guys. We check in with the sheriff every morning at the briefing that they have at the headquarters, the EOC headquarters, and he gives our, he would give us assignments to do. That ranged from the first, we were there Saturday morning, or Saturday afternoon, and our first task was to get their prisoners back, back down the mountain. So we, I did that and led that, and we left a group up there that, and we came, me and Jason went back next Sunday to start emergency operations. And we, we were assigned the Elk Park Fire Department District, where we use the new ATVs that we've got, and we, we literally, we took in just unreal amounts of food and water to people, removed several people from the area, and we were also assigned a missing person that was, a family that was swept off of a roof. We searched for the lady for three days along the riversides, and we were not able to locate her. But, but the monies with supervision, we do supervise our own people, but under the authority of the sheriff.
And I failed to mention, we do intend to ask for reimbursement through FEMA. On Sunday, well, did you do it Sunday night or Monday morning? We talked about it Sunday, I believe. On Sunday, or Sunday or Monday, one or the other, Anna created a new code in our payroll system, and then we had a director's meeting later in the week. But all the time is being coded to a certain thing, whatever number, let's say, you know, 23, and when, when folks that are smarter than me go into the software and type 23, it will pull up all the hours and overtime hours that have been worked in, in this effort, so.
And we, we did able to keep our costs to extremely minimal. They have, we're being, getting fuel up there from their school bus garage, so we've not had to purchase any fuel. We've not had any hotels. We sleep in a city pool area. That's where we've been bunking at, so we've not been having any hotel rooms. We took our own food up there. There's been a little bit of food purchased, but very, we've had very, very minimal expenses outside of salary there. We've not really had to bring, there was, there's no restaurants or anything up there anyway, no hotels in that little Avery County. So our expenses are solely, most likely, just a lot of salary. We probably have less than $1,500 in any other operating expenses or receipts that we'll turn in. So it's been a very minimal, we've tried to, you know, when FEMA feeds, we eat there. We took a grill up, we do our own hot dogs and hamburgers kind of thing. So we've tried to keep our expenses to a, to a minimal. But, so we have, outside the salaries, we will have very little expense.
Sheriff, I have a quick question. Are you going to be kind of like on a rotation then, as time goes along, or is this going to be kind of this-
Right. The Sheriff's Association has their, they have an emergency network. Anytime a sheriff requests it, it comes back out. But we've, I believe that we're holding 30 of their inmates, which is substantial workload for our people, and we've spent, we've had up to 20 deputies there. We were the first outside group into Avery County and did some really good work. They're getting really flooded right now with a lot of assistance. So we started pulling our, as other assistants came, we wanted to be, we wanted to be conscious and aware of costs, and make sure while we're there, we're being effective and not wasting time or resources. So we, we noticed over the weekend that they were getting other agencies to start to come in, so we've been pulling, gradually pulling back. The only team that we have up there now is that four-man response team, and they're going to be relieved either tomorrow or Wednesday. They're asking for investigators that are, have experience in recovering bodies and processing body scenes, but our CID is too busy right now with a couple murders and things we've had of our own. I want to offer assistance, and we are strongly, but I don't want it to affect the operations either that we provide to our citizens as well. But we, if, if they would have asked us to go back, we would have a limited resource, but it would be in, in small scale, because other sheriff's offices, there's 100 across the state, are coming in to take over for us.
Thank you.
Is, is 105 open, all the way up to Avery?
We go, we have to go 181 out of Morgington. That's about the only way in right now that's easy to get up, at 181 out of Morgington. And it comes right up on, it connects to 221. I don't know of the northern end.
221 to Boone, that's it.
I don't know how, I've not been up to that area, so I, I don't know. We do do, they have done trips to Watauga County and Banner Elk up that way, but we've been isolated. We found out that we got there Saturday, that there was no communication at all. The county EOC could not communicate with anybody else. There was no cell phone service, there was no radio, there was nothing. Police radios didn't work, and they had a hard time of capturing what was happening where in their county. So the first thing we, me and Sheriff Henley decided to do was just team up with the volunteer fire departments, because we, and I'm going to tell you that, if there's heroes in this, is the volunteer fire departments were unreal. They had already started in their little communities, and we were able to go to them, and they were able to tell us what we needed. And then they started reporting in person every so often to the headquarters and giving updates. So we learned real fast, the best way to function was to assign people to volunteer fire departments. And we, we started working with the Elk Park Volunteer Fire Department solely to try to locate some people that had been swept off a housetop, so. But I was really, I was very proud, and I'd sent some emails to Aaron, and the, it just happened, you know, I think that providence, and I think that God works in mysterious ways, but we were able to get those ATVs just a month ago, and we would not have had them. We were, I mean, when I tell you they were an instrument, we were the only people taking food back in there. And Greg's going to go up with me tomorrow, and we'll take him up to the same neighborhoods, and he'll be able to see. I think that our county employees did a great job. The money that you guys spent on that Viper system, that radio system, it was millions of dollars, but it was worth its weight in spades. That was the only radio communication we had up there. We could take our walkies and talk to Rowan County from Avery County, when a cell phone wouldn't work. We were able to partner with their deputies and have communication simply on our system, on our Viper system. While our teams were up there, we could communicate with each other when nobody else could communicate. So that, that system, the county invested in, that Viper radio system, is just, was hands-down was awesome for you guys to do, so. But that, if you have any other questions, I, but we've tried to keep expenses really down, and we don't want it to interfere with what we do here in the county, because our priority is, we want to take care of our neighbors, but at the same time, we want to make sure we fulfill what we can to our citizens as well.
Thanks, Sheriff. Can we take a motion on those first two items? I don't know what his wording was, but let's just, I think she took that down. Do we have a motion to approve what Aaron said?
So moved it.
In a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Then my question on this last one, seems like we do this every year on Autumn Jubilee, and since we don't really know, we just don't, we don't know how this works. I mean, can, can we, can't we just work this out throughout the year, to where we're not having to, I mean, have folks there, but just make it part of what we're doing, so that we're not, we're not coming up with this extra pay every year? Or do we not have the capacity to assign folks to?
Well, in the part we, we haven't had, this year, we'll have, we'll have a sheriff's employee assigned down there for the first time. Well, wait a minute, that shouldn't be the first time.
He's already there.
Okay. And this is just, we have so many people coming in, that's why Don requests that we do this every year for safety of just handling all, I can't remember how many thousands of people are down there over the weekend, but it's a lot.
Yeah, so we got 14 folks, and I guess, you know, my question is, why can't we just work this into our regular schedule, instead of you having to come to us every year and ask for $45 an hour?
Right. So you're talking about just working into the deputy's regular work week that's in there?
Yeah, and I don't know what I'm asking.
Right. We don't, we don't have the, in order to do that, that means we would have to take from, we'd have to take from somewhere else. There was, there was once a day, the sheriff's office had reserves, and you go back to the days of Bob Martin and George Wilhelm, and we had a 40 officer reserves, and that's, and that's how they, they would serve the county at faith, they would serve the county in the parades and things like this, but we, we no longer can do that because of HR reasons for that, because they're not covered under insurance, they're non-paid employees.
Workers' comp.
Workers' comp. We can't do that. And to have 14 people there on Saturday means, like, I've got to take 14 people off of their jobs during the week. It's a different animal. We have a lot of extra duty that comes into the office, and just to be frank and honest with you, if it doesn't pay 35, if it doesn't pay $40 an hour, they just don't do it. We have extra duty come in and to, it just, I guess, I think our deputies do a great job, but a lot of them nowadays, they don't, they don't give anything for free. I wish they would. I wish I could have a sign-up seat and say, "Come, come do it," but-
Yeah, we don't want that.
To staff the event, that's just, that's just what we have to do.
Yeah, certainly, we're not asking that, so.
No, I understand.
Answer my question, okay.
But our call volume is, and I'm so, I'm so glad we have that pay study going on, because our, our call volume and workload has been exceptionally high. The people that have been up in Avery County, I would not allow them to go on their work day. They had to go on their off day. Or if they were, or say they were on my SOCAT team, which I can send at my discretion wherever, but the, 80% of those employees that are up there are required to go on their off day. I would not let them go on their regular work day, because I do not want to take away from the functions that we already provide.
For Autumn Jubilee, do you know about how many we have there at any one time?
People? There's, there's, over the Friday and Saturday, I'd imagine, there was-
No, I'm talking about sheriff deputies. There's 14 on this list, but you don't have 14 there at once.
I do not know their schedule. There were 14, I think the schedule was staggered. Were there 14 there all day? There were sta, there were staggered in certain, in certain times, different shifts.
Three or four?
Mostly their function was directing traffic in, in and out of there.
Which is a bear.
It backs up quite a bit.
Mr. Chairman, I can make it where we don't, we don't have to talk about it again. I can put it in the budget ordinance and specify the-
Well, I was just going to say, why don't we just put it in budget and do plans for them?
I think the money may, may have been budgeted, or it was transferred, but-
Yeah, so we moved some money from Autumn Jubilee to the sheriff's salary account. It's just in the, they had asked that the pay rate be a different rate than what we had been doing, so that's why we're bringing it into item.
Yeah, and we, we can put that in the budget, in the ordinance, that for that, for those days, the pay will go to, you know, whatever it is, $45 an hour.
All right, do we have a motion to approve that?
So moved it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, guys, let's move on to board appointments. Four of them, I'll just combine them.
Can I ask a question first?
Yes, ma'am.
Sierra, so we only had one person apply for planning board and for Board of Adjustments, and it's the same person? So they're, they're now the same board?
I was going to say, if I'm not mistaken, they combined those two.
They're combining boards.
Oh. Okay. Thank you.
So Charles Richard Lawson applied for appointment at large in the planning board and Board of Adjustment. And then Historic Landmarks Commission, Deidra Helms, applied for appointment at a at-large seat. And Housing Authority, Hattie Johnson, applied for reappointment. Do we have a motion to approve those four?
So moved it.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Pierce?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.